All right, we'll call the meeting in order. Thanks for coming, and if you are able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounds really impressive with this many folks.
It was good. Go ahead, call the roll.
Trustee Guyer, trustee Spurling, trustee Baumann, trustee Youngerman, trustee Marasek, trustee Brzaska.
All right, and we do have a quorum this evening. Like I said, thank you all for coming. We'll go into the first item on the agenda is our public participation portion. The first one is a proclamation for the Montgomery Rotary Club 10-year anniversary. And I've asked Rotarian Teresa Spurling, and founding member, and past president.
Yeah, several times.
There you go.
Several times over.
To read the proclamation for us.
Excellent, thank you. Whereas the Rotary Club of Montgomery duly formed June 25th, 2015, with the principle of service above self, has served the community of Montgomery for 10 years. And whereas in the 10 years since then, the club and its Rotarians have worked tirelessly to address the most pressing needs of our community, from supporting education and promoting clean water and sanitation, to promoting economic development and environmental sustainability, helping youth and the homeless, and has served as a beacon of service and fellowship in the community for 10 years, fostering goodwill, understanding, and impactful change. And whereas the Rotary Club of Montgomery has been a catalyst for positive transformation, embodying the spirit of collaboration and cooperation that has strengthened the bonds of friendship and unity among its members and beyond. And whereas Rotary Club of Montgomery is celebrated and honored for its unwavering commitment to service, its dedication to the highest ethical standards, and its enduring legacy of making a difference in the world. And whereas since its inception, the Rotary, excuse me, the Rotary Montgomery Krug Elementary Garden has helped young residents learn the science and skills of vegetable gardening. And whereas the club has met the needs of the community through a free little pantry at Village Hall. And whereas the club has been an ardent supporter of Krug and Nicholson Elementary Schools with special focus on less fortunate students, the school libraries, and community academics. And whereas the club organizes several cleanups a year and is involved in painting the Montgomery in Motion decal annually. Whereas through the club's fundraising efforts, has given over $30,000 in financial grants to local organizations serving the health, humanitarian, and educational needs of the community over the last 10 years. Additionally, contributions to Rotary International Foundation and End Polio Now partnership with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to eradicate polio have exceeded $30,000 over the life of the club. And whereas the Village of Montgomery and our residents are grateful for the Rotary Club of Montgomery's 10 years of service and think the club and its Rotarians, past and present, for their role in building a stronger Montgomery now. Now therefore, Matthew T. Brawley, President of Village of Montgomery, am I supposed to read that part?
Yeah.
Okay. Does hereby proclaim, let me start over. Now therefore, Matthew T. Brawley, President of the Village of Montgomery, does hereby proclaim, June 25th, 2025, as the Rotary Club of Montgomery 10th Anniversary Day, adopted by the Village Board on the 23rd day of June 2025. And I'll move to approve.
So moved?
Motion second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And the ayes have it. And congratulations, and just for the record, I do proclaim, and I also do a fair amount of complaining in my life, so it's not incorrect. With that, I'm sure that we have some Rotary members here this evening?
Ben?
Perfect.
Where did Pete Waller go? Wasn't it Pete Waller?
And an applause. All right, moving right along, the next item B is the Volunteer of the Year Awards. Rosie.
Good evening, Village President Brawley, members of the board, and all of our honored guests. It's a privilege to stand before you as we take a moment to recognize some of the most dedicated and selfless individuals in our community, our volunteers. While I know that you choose to volunteer selflessly and without expectation of recognition or reward, today I wish to do just that. I want to let you know just how much your dedication is appreciated and what a significant impact it has on Montgomery. Our community thrives not just because of policies or plans, but because of the people who set up every day to make a difference. It is believed that community is defined not just by geography, but by the people who uplift and support it. The contributions of each of these volunteers exemplify the spirit of service that strengthens our shared values and brings us closer together. Whether it's through serving as a voice and an advocate for the voiceless, making the holidays extra magical, ensuring those in need still have food on their tables, bringing history to life through preservation and restoration, peer-to-peer interactions, or lending a hand wherever it's needed, these individuals embody the spirit of service that defines our community. Tonight, we are proud to honor nine outstanding volunteers and organizations who contributions, who have helped shape the vibrant and welcoming community that we call home. Whether they volunteer on a recurring basis or volunteer for specific things, regardless of how many hours they choose to give, it's important for everyone to know what these volunteers do, and what they do makes a difference. Tonight, we take time to celebrate the power of community, the value of service, and the people who make it all possible. Words alone cannot adequately express the gratitude that I, the board, and the community wish to convey. Please know that your volunteerism is recognized, appreciated, valued, and cherished. We thank you and look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. Our first honoree has dedicated hundreds of hours to advocating for the best interests of children in foster care as a court-appointed special advocate or a CASA. With unwavering compassion and commitment, he has served as a powerful voice for children who have been removed from their homes, ensuring their needs are heard and their futures are protected. Beyond his advocacy work, his volunteer mentors, he volunteers and mentors new volunteers through the CASA Advocate Peer Program, offering guidance and encouragement to those just beginning their journey. An integral cog in the support system, he helps bridge the gap to foster families and is a collaborative partner to child welfare professionals, helping to shape life-changing decisions with insight and empathy. His tireless dedication continues to make a profound and lasting impact on the lives of vulnerable children in our community. I'm pleased to announce the 2025 Youth Impact Volunteer of the Year, Mr. Bob Marins. The Heart of the Community Award goes to an individual who has been a cherished pillar of the community for decades, known for her warmth, dedication, and tireless volunteer spirit. For many years, she brought joy to families by donning the red suit and embodying the holiday spirit as Mrs. Claus. Her commitment to beautifying the town is equally enduring, having served multiple terms on the beautification committee, and assisting with planting flowers along the Mill Street Bridge each spring. A proud former business owner, she has long supported the local economy and fostered a sense of connection and pride in her hometown. Her legacy is one of kindness, service, and a deep love for her community. I'm pleased to announce the 2025 Heart of the Community Volunteer of the Year, Ms. Nancy Tranby. There are many ways the Montgomery community supports families who might need a little extra help. The Community Impact Award goes to a volunteer who helps ensure a local food pantry is stocked and ready for about 15 to 25 families that utilize its services on a regular basis. With humanity and grace, she provides not only food and household essentials, but also dignity, privacy, and a deep sense of care to every person who walks through her doors. She remembers names, listens with empathy, and ensures that each family knows they are seen, valued, and never alone. Rarely asking for help or recognition, this volunteer leads with a servant's heart, reminding us all that there is no shame in accepting support, only strength in community. I'm pleased to announce the 2025 Community Impact Volunteer of the Year, Ms. Alicia Wall. This group of dedicated volunteers, whose passion for local history and farming heritage has left a lasting mark on the community. This year's nonprofit organization Impact Award goes to a group of people who make learning fun. Through hands-on education and storytelling, they bring the past to life for younger generations, sharing the traditions and values of old-time farm life. Their dedication extends to the restoration of historic farm buildings, preserving the physical legacy of the area's agricultural roots. As key organizers of community events at the farm, they create meaningful experiences that not only celebrate heritage, but also support the vital work of the Conservation Foundation. Their efforts are a beautiful blend of preservation, education, and community spirit. I'm pleased to announce the 2025 Nonprofit Impact Volunteers of the Year, the Dixon Mers Farm Partners. Our last award of the evening recognizes four young women who are bright up-and-comers. The Rising Stars Award recognizes individuals who make it a point to be inclusive, creating safe, encouraging environments for learners of all kinds to dance to their own beat. These four remarkable young women who serve as peer leaders at a dance studio dedicated to children with disabilities and special needs. With hearts full of kindness and a deep commitment to inclusivity, they lead by example, offering friendship, encouragement, and unwavering support to every dancer. Their smiles are often the highlight of the day for many participants who eagerly await the arrival of their beloved dance buddies. Through their compassion and joyful presence, these volunteers create a space where every dancer feels seen, valued, and celebrated. Their impact goes far beyond the dance floor, building lasting connections and enriching the lives of everyone involved. I'm pleased to announce the 2025 Rising Stars Volunteers of the Year, Harper Alt, Madeline Gordon, Caitlin LaMonica, and Avon Yarborough, the Peer Leaders of Special Stars Incorporated. Thank you to all of our community volunteers, and congratulations to our 2025 Volunteer of the Year honorees. Before you all sit down, if we could have all of our honorees come back for one big group picture, if we can all fit in the middle circle, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you all again for every single thing that you do, day in and day out. Through the power of community, you have all left a lasting mark on Montgomery.
Again, thank you all, I appreciate it, I'm honored as a resident to witness all of this and get to see all the good things you're doing in the community, truly making it a better place every day for the right reasons and helping each other out, that's what all of this is about. So thank you for coming, and you don't have to stay, like I said, in the reception, go grab some cookies, enjoy the heat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did Tim leave too? There he is. So sorry, Tim. Sent all the audience home. All right, so we'll move on to item C, under Public Participation, is the introduction of Tim Bedea at Public Works.
Thank you, President Brawley. So I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Tim. He's the, not quite the newest member of our team, we had a new member start today, we'll bring him at a future meeting as well, but Tim started with the village about almost a month ago now. So Tim comes to us, he is the new facility building maintenance supervisor, filling the role of Tyler who left us a while back. So Tim comes as a graduate of Rochelle High School. He then went on to earn a degree in HVAC from Woburn County Community College. He spent 12 years with Four Sons Heating and Air Conditioning before transitioning over to Swigoland Park District where he was there, under their facilities group, for about four years before coming to us. So we look forward to the contributions that Tim brings into the village and the ever-so-challenging task of keeping all of our facilities up and running, and running well, especially when it's extremely hot as it's going to be this week. So without Tim and our team, we can't make that happen. So I'd like to welcome Tim.
All right, move on to, and welcome, Tim. We're very excited to have you onboard, just to have you around, honestly. A guy with some great positive energy, so appreciate all of that. So our last item for public participation is Public Comment Period. Is there any member of the public that's here tonight that wishes to address the board on any topic? All right, hearing none. Go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. There's been a request by trustee Brzaska to remove item D under consent and put it for a separate action. So the remaining consent will be item A, minutes of the June 9th Village Board Meeting, accounts payable, summary report for June 23rd, and the refuse report for May 2025. Call the roll.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
That carries.
And that item's going to item G?
G.
Thank you.
Yes, G under separate action.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to items for separate action tonight. The first one is ordinance 2137, approving a sales tax rebate agreement with Walgreens. This is first reading, Manager Burke.
Thank you, President Brawley. As part of Walgreens restructuring, they are in the process of closing 1,200 underperforming stores. In February, they notified Montgomery that one of Montgomery's three Walgreens locations was at risk for closing. So after more discussions with Walgreens, we came up with a sales tax rebate agreement where the village would rebate $13,000 a year for the next five years, on the condition that they keep all three of their Montgomery locations open. There is a representative from Walgreens with us this evening, if you have any questions specifically for Walgreens.
Okay. Questions for staff on the board?
No.
Motion to approve?
First.
Oh, it's our first ring, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get it next time.
So this will be on for a future meeting for approval. Yeah, thanks. All right, moving on to item B tonight is approval of a contract extension with United Meters Incorporated, UMI, for labor of replacing water meters. This is a waiver of bid, Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So the Village Board approved a contract with UMI to install water meters throughout the village. We had a phased plan approach in that contract of three years. Due to inabilities for us to procure some of the equipment, as relates to the water meters themselves and/or reading devices, we weren't able to hit our targets throughout that contract. So staff is looking tonight to extend that contract for an additional three years, with the focus of executing the replacement of all of our residential water meters first, and then moving on to some of our problematic commercial meters that are identified in the plan. Just one thing to note is that this is a not-to-exceed. All of the pricing that consists in the contract is unit pricing, so therefore, however many are executed is what we're paying for. So when we fell short in the original contract of what our targets were, it doesn't mean that we paid that contracted value, everything was based upon unit pricing. So if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
And so I understand the total's 2,900 left?
So they're estimates, so the issue that we have is we have ongoing appointments where our own staff are attending, so that number's kind of always fluctuating. So again, in the contract, all of the numbers are estimates, and we're only paying based off of unit pricing. So we've kind of somewhat set that a little bit of a higher target, just to give us some fluctuation.
But that's about, that's how many are left?
Roughly.
Roughly.
Yep.
In the village.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Go ahead and call the roll.
I'm sorry, what was all the pointing?
Nothing.
He said it under his breath.
Oh, so...
Yeah, Brzaska had the second.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear him. That's what it was? All right.
I was gonna give it to you, but then...
It's okay, I'm good. Okay, trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
That carries six to zero, thank you. Item C tonight, Resolution 2025-018, accepting Restaurant Depot Platte of Dedication, Director Abt.
Yes, so this is for the property located at the northeast corner of Awkut and Orchard. As you recall, we approved Warehouse Distribution Center for Restaurant Depot at the end of last year. So as part of village approvals, typically when we have situations where there's cleanup with right-of-way, we try to get that done with any new development. This property's southern property line actually extends all the way down to the section line, so it includes a significant portion of Awkut Road. So while we do have prescriptive rights, we don't actually have the right-of-way dedicated, so this platte of dedication would give us 73 feet of right-of-way, and that does include room for any future intersection improvements that might require a little bit extra right-of-way. So we did have EEI prepare the platte of dedication, Restaurant Depot ownership has approved of it, and we'll sign it once it's been approved by the village board.
Perfect.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Guyer?
Second.
Second by Baumann. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek? Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
That carries six oh, thanks. All right, Item D for separate action tonight is the Amendment of Chapter Four of the Employee Policy Manual Regarding Technology Use. Assistant Manager Ostrico.
Thank you. So this is an amendment to, like it says, Chapter Four of the Employee Manual, which is our technology use policy for employees. The initial objective of this revision was to implement an AI use policy for employees, so it does include that. Generally, it, the policy does allow employees to use AI for work product. It does set some guidelines for that, such as making sure that we're not inputting personal information into AI, recognizing that it is subject to FOIA, citing the use of AI in work product, so that everybody knows it's being used. Along the way, we did realize there's some other changes that needed to be made to the technology policy as a whole, including our social media use policy, which previously only addressed personal use of employees' personal social media channels, so we did update that as well to address use of the village's social media channels, and then just some other general updates to address some different cybersecurity risks, such as two-factor authentication, ensuring passwords are regularly updated, that sort of thing. So if there's any questions, I can answer those.
I just have one. Did you use AI to write this?
I considered it, but I did not. I did the old-fashioned way of reaching out to other communities to see what they had in place.
That's a lot of, a lot of redlining.
I do have a question about the two-factor authentication. Is that, is the second piece of that then coming through email? Because like normally, we get it on our phone, so that's why I'm asking, is it...
Yep, so everybody has a, I guess it's an app called Duo that we use for two-factor authentication, so it does come through most people's phones to be able to authenticate.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. So I did have one question, thank you. We've got a motion and a second. So I know that you probably looked into this. The, there's no, I guess, ban on using any specific AI platform. So at my corporation, we can't use chat, for whatever reason. Have you, was that any, I guess, did you weigh any pros and cons with that, or...
Not really. I did talk to our IT consultants, and they didn't feel that it was really necessary to specifically ban outright any. We do all have access through our Microsoft Office to Copilot. It's kind of built into everything. You know, and everybody, when they're using any general search engine, now you'll all see you're getting, you know, AI results right at the top. So it is really interwoven into things that we're already doing anyway.
That's awesome. All right, very cool. Thanks for doing this, I appreciate it. Got to have some parameters on it, happening so fast. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
That carries six oh, thank you. All right, tonight, Item E is a PSA for the 2025 Gap Implementation Program Design Engineering. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So the staff has identified an area this year in our sidewalk gap program that is along the Douglas Road corridor that extends from the intersection at Montgomery Road and Douglas south to an existing business there. Staff has been working with the St. Paul Cemetery Group to identify a plan to be able to extend that sidewalk. It is a very worn path, it is highly-used area, so we do feel it has a great deal of need in that area. The other complexity to this is the relocation of some ComEd poles. So EEI has been working, as well as staff, with ComEd on a relocation plan, which they have presented to us, so we are looking to move forward with that, hopefully as soon as we can get all the wheels in motion and get this moving forward. So if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
So I can't tell you how excited I am to see this. I was just driving by there the other day, and I convinced myself, there's no way we can get a sidewalk in there, and it's never going to happen, and that's disappointing, because folks continue to walk in the grass, you know, it's very close to the road. So I do appreciate you tackling the hard projects, or the somewhat hard projects, at least in my mind. Any other comments? Motion? Moved and seconded down there? Perfect.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And that carries six to zero. All right, for Item F tonight, we are tabling that one for a future meeting, so we'll bring that back in the future. All right, last one is Item D, which comes from Consent. Item D, sorry, this is G, from Consent. Item D, this is a request for a liquor license Class J and to waive the temporary liquor license fee for the Montgomery Foundation for Montgomery Fest.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
That carries five to zero. All right, we don't have anything for discussion tonight. Is there anything new or unfinished?
Is there an update on the vacant lot at Lafayette Montgomery Road with the gravel issue?
Yes, so last week, staff met with the previous owner to go over what needs to be done to clean that up. He is going to discuss it with the new property owner and try to get that rectified. I don't have a timeline on that at this point, so we will be following up with a letter to get a timeline on that cleanup.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Director Apt. Director Wolf, you're off the hook tonight with me. Director Apt, after this heat wave, it does not have to be done during this heat wave, could we please get a sweep again of the signs? We seem to be having quite a few popped up as I'm driving through town, but I don't care, that it's, it doesn't need to be done in this sweltering heat.
They have been prolific this season, I agree. Thank you. We'll get out there.
That was it?
That was it.
All right.
I just want to note to staff, Rosie, anyone else involved, great effort tonight recognizing the volunteers in town. We talked a little bit about sense of community in the Intergov meeting, and that certainly plays a part of it. So tremendous job finding those volunteers, locating them, and giving them the recognition tonight, so awesome job.
Yes. Ditto. I don't have anything.
Last Wednesday, Beautification Committee gave out floral awards throughout the village. There were 62 nominees, and we had 58 winners, and I'd like to thank the nine volunteers that helped us out with that.
All right.
You have one other thing.
All right.
I don't know if anybody saw this, I don't even know how many people in this room knew her, but Sharon Horner has passed away. She was a previous employee with the village, she's a treasurer. She was at the old village hall, and she did everything. Anything that had to do with money, coming in or going out, it was her even payroll. So yeah, her service is a week from today. That did her least.
She was the entire finance department for a while.
Yeah.
I do have one item, just to update the board on. So last week, we were notified that the IPA loan that we applied for, the, it's just over $20 million, was executed with the IPA. I need to coordinate getting some signatures from Village President Brawley, but everything is good to move forward with those projects this coming summer and into next year, and we were able to get a 30-year loan term, which is new. Previously, it had been 20, so it's good, and I think the interest rate is, I don't know, below 2%, so very favorable terms. So it's good news.
It's awesome.
So you're on the hook for 30 years, because if we don't pay it, you signed it, that's on you, man.
That's true. All right, if there's nothing else. Future meetings, you can see Plan Commission has a special meeting this Thursday night. The agenda has been posted. Our next Village Board meeting will be Monday, July 14th, so if I don't see any or all of you before the 4th, have a safe 4th, and we'll see you in July. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And adjourned, thank you.